Good work. How are you?
Yeah, we...
Thank you for coming.
Yes, great sir and father, we thank this day you've given to us today, Lord. We thank for all your many blessings that you've given us. Lord, I pray to be with each and every one of us, Lord, as we make the decisions for this county, Lord. We pray for your guidance that we'll just always do the right thing, Lord. Lord, again, we thank for all your many blessings you've given us. Thank you for our forgiveness for our sins. Rest these things in thy name. Amen.
I would like to testify on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I've got several papers attached to your agenda this morning. And on your agenda, I have four resolutions and the 2020 budget proposal. I'd like to kind of discuss a little bit of the reasons of where we're at, what we need to do, and some of the things that we need to do to get there. But we're at the point where we have to make some changes. You will find the board attached resolutions first. A resolution to stop doing the health insurance and post-employment benefits for new hires. Not our current retirees, not our current employees, but new hires, effective October 1st. The reason for this is right now, our post-employment benefit cost is $150,000 per year on our general fund. Our liability right now, if New York County Commission came to an end, to pay for all of our current employees and to pay for those that are retired, would be several million dollars, close to 11 million. We don't have that kind of money to be able to afford that kind of liability. The next resolution that's attached is a resolution freezing new hire and overtime. And what we mean by that is some of the overtime that we have within the general fund, some of the hiring that could possibly go on in the next several months to the next year, we can't afford more full-time employees and benefits on those. And with overtime at time and a half, when you are more than 40 hours a week, and you don't have a vacation or a sick time at time and a half, we cannot pay for that amount at this time. We do not have that much money. The third resolution is on our inmate medical. Currently, that cost is $272,000 a year. In the position that we're in right now with the general fund and with the general situation and repairs that go on there, we cannot afford that cost. The attorney has looked at the contract and has prepared a resolution lowering the amount that we pay for inmate medical from $272 to $170, because that is all your budget can withhold at this time. The last thing for a resolution is concerning purchase orders. Right now, we issue purchase orders for anything over 200. Usually, they're open POs. They don't tell us exactly how much over 200 it is. And it's supposed to be if it's over 200 for the span of a month at one location or for one product or multiple products. With their financial state the way it is, we need to issue those purchase orders before the items are purchased to make sure that there is money in that budget and no one goes over budget so that you can control the spending. And we need to do that across the board. Because right now, when they call in a purchase order and it's something that's $3,000, $4,000, and you don't have the money for it and the general fund to be able to buy it, we've shot ourselves in the foot, Lord, you don't know. So those are the resolutions. I want to kind of explain why we need those now. And that's going to be on the paperwork that's put in detail to the agenda and resolutions that I gave you. The first set of papers, or the first sheet, are the department replaced. And you've already seen those. I think this is the second or third time that I've been in the sheet. And some of these sheets are front and back. The second sheet is where various people are going to have a raise across the board. And the total cost to the county is $290,000. The total cost to the general fund would be $157,000. Those are just some numbers that I wanted y'all to have so that you knew about what that cost would be. The third page is an explanation of insurance and pay increases over time. I've heard comments made numerous times, I've seen them on social media, where people say that they haven't received anything. But this will kind of show you from 2006 to 2019 what the cost increase has been for the county on the employees for health insurance and on actual pay itself. It will show you that in 2006, the county paid $3,420 per year for single health insurance coverage. The employee paid nothing. That cost is $1.64 per hour per person. So whatever their pay rate is, add that $1.64 benefit on it. In 2006, they paid $4,272 per year for family health insurance. That was a benefit that the county provided so for those people who had family coverage of $2.05. In 2019, insurance almost doubled. The county paid $6,192 per year for single health insurance coverage. The employee paid nothing. That is a $2.98 benefit. In 2019, the county paid $10,848 for family health insurance. And the employee paid $4,764 for family insurance coverage. That is a $5.22 benefit that they are receiving that have family coverage more than individuals that have single coverage that work the same positions. So from 2006 to 2019, the benefit increased for people with single health insurance by $1.33. And from 2006 to 2019, the family coverage benefit increased by $3.16 per hour. On pay increases. Now, there have been positions that have received like a step or they migrated up because of their job duty where they didn't receive full pay all at one time. In September 2007, the county gave a $0.25 per hour across the board ominous pay increase. In September 2008, they gave another $0.25 pay increase. In September 2010, they gave another $0.50 pay increase. In August 2013, they gave a $1.00 pay increase on ominous payroll. The amount that's on the side per year is the raw dollar amount. It doesn't have the percentage on there that shows how much the county had to pay again for taxes on that or the retirement or the amount that workers' comp increased by. That's just raw dollar per hour, 80 hours. The county gave the following one-time pay amounts. In December 17, 2017, they gave a $30 bonus, so to say, to all county full-time employees. In 2018, they did the same thing. On the back, switching back again to health insurance, you can see each year how much the insurance has increased for single coverage by month or by year for the county. Then the second column shows the employees' portion of health insurance. And the third column shows what the county paid for those individuals for family insurance. Those are just some numbers that I wanted y'all to see because we're at the point now with insurance increasing as much as it has, the county cannot continue to increase as the amounts increase.
We don't get to increase this next year.
We have been told what the premiums are. They haven't told us if we're under premium or standard. What keeps us from being on the premium plan typically is either lack of participation in the long-term screens or when 5% of our bill is not retirees.
I know I had a mayor the other day that theirs was going up 5.9%.
So gee, it started more along the line of budgets. There were some changes of things that I made in the budget. What I do is I use a five-year average when compiling the budget. And I look to see if there weren't any years in which there was a spot in the expenditures to where maybe somebody had a huge breakdown or something to those effects. Maybe they had an accident to try to get an average. And then I compare that with what we've done that year. And then I forecast what we need to do. I also take into consideration if we're going to have 26 payrolls that year or if we're going to have 27 payrolls the next year. Those are things that you kind of have to look at so that you can judge if you need to increase that payroll or decrease that payroll and the benefits associated with it. Some big changes in the general fund besides just adjusting line items and decreasing budgets. Inmate healthcare, we talked about that a few minutes ago. There was a resolution that I'm proposing that y'all adopt would save the general fund $102,000. Currently, in the sheriff's department, we have a slew of jailers, dispatch, and deputy. We have 16 holidays, and they're not able to take off their holidays. So we pay eight hours of holiday pay. We don't need to do that. We need to give that holiday and let it be a floating holiday and schedule around it. But we need to cut that $49,049 out because we can't afford it. On polling places, currently, we're paying $15,517.20. We need to look at having contracts in place and paying the contract rate rather than paying utilities because you cannot forecast what that utility is going to be. And we can't even control what that amount is going to be depending on the weather and if someone raises it on or if they turn it off. Change in the courthouse phone system.
On the polling places, how many actually polling places do we pay to use for elections? I know there's 14 volunteer, but there's very few used. I think maybe five for one, 10 for one, I've got two. So how many, do you know exactly how many that we use?
Right now, I don't off the top of my head. I've got a spreadsheet up right there I can go get. But the other problem that we have is we're paying for most, if not all, volunteer fire departments' power bills. And we can't continue with that method.
But the ones that we use for polling, we need to pay them. And they do, mine does more than just for the court, because they're on 911 calls. And when I'm out there, most of the time, they're at it. Is their contract negotiable or is this what you've got down that we can set a contract with them to take care of the ones that we do use?
Y'all can set a contract with them. And what my recommendation on that would be is if we don't own that building for liability purposes, we need to have a contract in place so that the building, depending on if it's, no matter what it is or who owns it, that it's in good shape when your constituents come in to vote. But for the volunteer fire departments, regardless of using them as a polling place or not, what we can do is out of the TRC money, you can make appropriations to them through that for tourism, recreation, and convention. And that would be able to help with that. As far as a dollar amount set, y'all would need to set that dollar amount for a contract. That would be my recommendation because we use them typically three to four years for polling. But for other avenues, for other things that they do.
We do have a revenue that we can help them with and take care of.
Okay. And we can't have a TRC?
As long as they have a function, a tourism, recreation convention.
I was wrong though.
I thought we could.
On the phone systems, the county commission is charged with maintaining the courthouse and providing phone services to various offices within the courthouse. It's something that we don't really have a choice on. It's just something that we're mandated to do. The phone system that's there has been there for over 25 years. It's hard to find replacement phones for it. And with today's technology and everything advancing and with Freedom Fiber that came in and their phone systems that we have here, the overalls in the office got together, they did a study, Kelly made contact with Freedom Fiber. We would be able to lower our air phone bills by $10,585.30 in the general fund if we switch over. Now, the cost is going to be the phones and the wiring because you'd have to have different wiring, which we would be able to pay for wiring out of capital improvement. It wouldn't be in the general fund. And it would be a savings. And then also in the future, we would be progressed, we'd be able to handle the technology that will be coming. Whereas right now, we're not. And if you walk through the courthouse, you will see wires, you will see conduit. We would be able to move some back and make it a little bit nicer hopefully and safer. The next change is not a very expensive savings, but it's still a savings. We have an air mark contract where they get the rugs in the courthouse. They clean them, they put them over the ramp going into the backside with the only entrance door to the courthouse right now. If that's something that we can go someplace and purchase a rug and clean the rug yourself, that would save the general fund $3,000 a year. The next thing is...
How many rugs? Four, six?
Six. Right now, each month, we have been investing in a CD. That CD total per year is $37,000 for the general fund to do investment. We cannot afford a $37,000 investment to a CD right now.
Is that the money that we put in there for financial, for industrial?
Yes.
In other words, how long have we been, how much do we have in that fund?
We have approximately $100,000 of that CD set for economic development.
So that would be frozen. I mean, that would stay there and we're just couldn't, couldn't... That's never before we used to pay for CDs, for CDL. But now, what do we pay for C3?
So we're going to quit adding the $37,000 per year to that and just freeze that CD at $400,000, that's what the CD's got up to?
Somewhere there.
And just freeze it and then later determine what we want to do with it.
That still leads to 30.
Yes, sir. The next thing is we have a contract with David Sayer. And he had proposed five different phases within the courthouse. And if there's capital improvement funds, we pay for phase one. And he says he can accept the cost of that. It could lower your electrical bills inside of the courthouse by 25% because the air right now, to keep the upstairs power cool, the downstairs freezes. So what he would be able to do with phase one is control that temperature on the bottom floor so they wouldn't be freezing and we wouldn't be wasting the power and the electricity to run that water cooler pump to be able to cool all floors. So you would see a savings there.
Maybe even lower than that as long as the summers are getting.
If we go back to doing what we've done in previous years on the air conditioning in spring and then in the fall, cut that sucker off for a total of 30 days, maybe do it around a holiday if the weather's permitting in it, you would see a savings of $10,638.45. The overtime freeze, I went through the general fund and I pulled everybody's overtime in the general fund only. And we paid $18,036.58 out in overtime last year, like this current year, everyone now. That's the reason for the overtime freeze. The per diem, I went through and I pulled the receipts. And I looked at those dates and when some of the receipts were over $75, if you were to do a per diem on food that maxed out at $75 per day versus paying the receipts if the receipts were lower, then you would see a savings of $2,807.80.
What if we cut that down to what we talked about the other day, 25?
It would be even more so.
I don't eat $75 a day.
I would say cut that to 25 per person.
That was one of the concerns that I had is you do $25 per day or bringing the receipts if they're under 25, but have that 25 as a cap. Because like myself, when I go, I don't bring back food tickets. So you've got to be careful with people who don't bring back food tickets turning in a claim just to get $25.
Yeah.
So you need to have that cap adjustment so that we're not overspending versus saving.
Well, through the ACCA, that's all we're allowed anyway, $24, I believe. If you go 25, you broke that, so I'm around that.
Of course, you know, at one meal, that's all you can accept from a vendor.
From a vendor buying your food. On family health care costs, we had discussed changing what the employee pays on that portion. They paid $168.50 per payroll twice a month for years. And last year, they went up to $198.50. There's a discussion between going up another 30 to 60. If you went up 30 more dollars on the family health insurance cost and tried to narrow that gap with what the county pays for one individual versus another individual based off of the insurance in the general fund alone, you would save $20,160.
That was figured at 30.
That was figured at 30. On the chart below it, you can see in each fund how much that savings would be. Overall, it would be a savings of $28,072.80.
Explain those numbers on the districts down there.
Okay. On those districts, those were commissioners. And the way your pay is calculated, a portion of your pay comes out of the general fund, it comes out of the road bridge fund, and it comes out of the district fund. So the cost of insurance for those commissioners in those particular districts are pro-rated between those three. So you would have like an employee and a commissioner for you or just the commissioner with the family coverage. And then I put at the bottom, I still needed something as far as a resolution for per diem, if that's something that y'all chose, that y'all would be interested in. But I did, when I calculated the budget, I calculated it with the savings that was here on this year, $2,807. On the next couple of pages.
In other words, our salaries will be reflected on this insurance rate. Increase also, we'll pay that much for everyone.
Everyone.
Just for family coverage.
Not to say everyone's family.
Why is the top number so much different from that one?
The general fund?
No, yeah, well, go down to D1.
Okay.
The numbers on it and then look at the other numbers. But they too don't have it on here.
That's because District 2 doesn't have anyone with family health insurance in this district. That current is based off the number of employees times what that rate is for health insurance right now. And then, which became is 94. And then the proposed amount would be if it was 94, less than $30.
So those figures is actually what is costing your district for family health insurance and then out on the savings of them. And the two don't have none. So you're saving a bunch. Okay, I got you.
On the next three pages, we got over this a little bit, but we need to go over it a little bit more. There's three pages, the first page is front and back. And...
Which one you talking about?
On this one.
It was a number.
It's the one that says measure report for fiscal plan. It's going to be...
Page one of three.
That page. So the first column shows how much your current budget is. And the second column shows how much revenue and expenditures that we had actually brought in or spent or transferred in and out of each fund as of yesterday. And the last column is showing my projections. Like I said before, what I did, I didn't average, but then I also compared to see if there were spots or not, to see if something needed to be adjusted for inflation or if something needed to be drastically cut down simply because it had been over budgeted at some point in the past. The FY 2020 reflects the changes that were done in the chart that we discussed a few minutes ago. And gentlemen, we had a deficit. We were not able to afford our general fund. We had more expenditures going out than we had revenues coming in, even with all of the cuts that we discussed a few minutes ago. They're very drastic cuts. And I had gone through for weeks at work and at home with my laptop, hours at a time, trying to figure out how to make things any better. But the problem is, we have a revenue, but our expenditures are more than our revenues because we have things that are tearing up. We have things that are constantly tearing up. that either had to be fixed or had to be replaced. We had revenue that over the years, we have trusted amounts that were brought to us based off of good faith without documentation supporting those numbers. And those have come back to the commission in the end. So when I lost a revenue and then increase in expenditure with no revenue to be able to offset those issues that have arisen in the past, we had a loss. The only way I can get the general fund to balance or to even have a seven thousand one hundred and fourteen dollar surplus was to go to what we have in the jail fund. Now, what that jail fund is, is back a few years ago, they started charging cities housing fees. That housing fee has been put into a fund called the jail fund because previous commission wanted to use that money to somehow be able to help the efforts for a new jail. The money that is there is not a magnificent amount. And that amount's gonna fluctuate from year to year based off the number of inmates that you have inside of that jail and how long they stay. And with overcrowding issues that we've discussed before and trying to get people out, that number will more than likely go down in years to come. So what I had to do is if you look to that other funds, you'll see the jail housing fee revenue expenditures. Last year, we received approximately ninety thousand in housing fees. Some of those were fees from previous years, some of that's interest. I took seventy five thousand from that account and transferred that into general fund to be able to make the general fund work. That's not a guaranteed number every year, that's putting a Band-Aid on a huge problem. We need a new revenue source. That's our general fund situation. Now, if you go on to other funds I discussed with you there, the jail fund, the next five funds are your district accounts. What I've done there, I've gone in, I've reflected how much money you should have coming in and the oil and gas capital, your actual gasoline tax, your increase in highway and traffic, your portion of mineral severance, your portion of coal tax. I did not include drawings. I'll explain that in a few minutes. Now, when you look at current, you're gonna see negatives in the current year. I want to explain those to you. That means the revenue that you brought in this year versus the expenditures that you spent. Your expenditures were more than your revenues that you brought in this year. But you all had money in your checking accounts when the fiscal year started. So your checking accounts don't reflect a deficit balance. Your checking accounts had money in it prior to the revenue for this year. But I know in District One, we purchased equipment. I know in District Two, we purchased equipment. I know in District Three, we purchased equipment.
Plus floods.
Plus floods.
And I'm waiting on FEMA to pay me back.
That's, that's what I was thinking, what kind of, this, these numbers.
Yeah, they don't reflect what we're gonna get.
What I did, I did go in and adjust for the amounts that I had been given so far.
Through FEMA.
Through FEMA. The money started coming in last week and there was money for four, five, and road construction, but we haven't received the actual cash value before we were in the districts.
There should be, uh, well, I think on the numbers, there should be over two hundred thousand, which I think it's like a percentage that we get, like seventy five.
You get seventy five percent by?
Percent, and there's-
In the state of Maine, we, the state of Maine, what, twelve, twelve and a half?
The money that we've gotten in so far is just the seventy five percent and that's coming through this state.
There's applied for like two hundred thousand that will come-
Two hundred nine.
Two hundred nine thousand that will be, come in, should come in and take care of this 'cause where this is showing up, this is what we have actually spent out of our own districts.
Well, and that's gonna be another problem that we're gonna talk about in just a second. Uh, so that's gonna do that reflection. The next fund is your gasoline tax. What that nine hundred and forty four thousand is, is the actual gas tax that comes into Marion County that y'all divide up twenty two, twenty two, twenty two, seventeen, seventeen. So for a portion of your revenues that are seen in the district, this right here is the money that that comes from. That is like, you'll see it has the one twenty five as a surplus in that account. What we do is we try and go based off of what comes in and leave, run for rounding issues. The next fund is your road and bridge fund. That money pays for your conferences. It pays for your liability insurance. So you have that there, it also pays all of your membership fees. Those don't come out of your districts, that comes through here. It pays a portion of your workers' comp insurance, that's what that is. The next fund is your highway and traffic fund. That one shows a deficit for the current year. And the reason that deficit is there is we brought in one hundred and twenty nine thousand. But at the beginning of the year, we had money in that account as a fund balance. And when we wrote the checks out to the districts, that money that was in that fund balance was included when we divided that up equally amongst the five districts. That's why that will show a negative forty four right there.
Brooke, can you, if you go back to the road and bridge fund, we set aside six hundred and fifty thousand right before that and it cost us four hundred and seventy four. Is that gonna fluctuate or is that gonna stay the same?
The six hundred and fifty is the revenue that we're expecting to come in, their, um, ad valorem monies.
Right.
That money should be consistent around the amounts. It's been that way for the past five years, it's gone up and down about a thousand dollars each way.
So we should, we should save the hundred and seventy five thousand by doing what we've got, okay?
Okay. The next one is capital improvement. And I want to explain that one in a little bit of detail right there. Capital improvement comes from the oil and gas capital. When that money comes into the office, half of that money goes into capital improvement and the other half of that money is to be divided equally amongst the districts. So in your revenues, y'all saw a portion of what goes into capital improvement into your districts that's to be used for roads, for the capital improvement over infrastructure. Right now, I don't have anything budgeted there simply because I don't have what the cost is for telephone lines in that warehouse or for phase one. I would guess probably around twenty thousand, if I were guessing. But because I don't do that kind of work, I wouldn't be a hundred percent, but I would feel comfortable with twenty five thousand. The next funds, I wanna skip and I'll come back to those. I've got mineral severance, which is three funds down from what we just discussed. That money, when it comes in, it gets divided up and it goes to the districts. That's another portion of the money that y'all operate off of.
This mineral severance, is there any chance we'll ever get the hundred thousand back that we were taking, was taken for us a few years back?
Your coal tax has increased, but not significantly. And with the way that is written and it being split out to different agencies amongst North Alabama, that would be something that you would need to speak with your representatives about, but that would also cover representatives from other counties as well.
So in other words, it's their discretion, they took it, they can give it back?
That would be something that they would probably want to look at in legislation because I'm not sure that all of those people receive that money as it is written now.
Oh, it's just the same, it's just the same coal severance tax that we talked to Darling and Tracy about at one of the meetings. And we thought maybe we'd use that, and I think, I think it ended up, they still get it, but they're using it as their discretion, what they want.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. But that is the same.
Still is gone, I mean, it was taken from our-
But that is, that is coal severance tax that we talked to them about earlier. Yeah.
Your next fund is your reappraisal fund. And that's our group that goes out and they assess your property values. What this budget has included yet, we've been with your salaries. Um, it's, skip the page and go, because mine was out of order, is this page. It includes a new GIS system where they come over and they do a flyover of areas to be able to update your assessing, to be able to get more ad valorem money into your general fund and your road and bridge fund.
Who does that now? Contracted?
I think it's flagship.
Do we, do we bid that out?
Barbara does that, I think it's their requested proposals every three years.
When will that come back up?
I think that's gonna be next year, but I'll double check it. The way that budget works, you spend the money. If you don't spend the money, you either at the end of September write a check to the State Department of Revenue and you give them their money back. And that money is split amongst the different agencies which they withheld that from. Or you keep the cash balance on your books, which is what we do. And then we send a letter to the Department of Revenue that tells them how much money their cash balance was as of September thirtieth with an accrual and a listing and a copy of journal entries and invoices attached that show bills that have come in after we have closed out that are not reflected in the bank's cash balance. And then the next year, the revenue that's supposed to come in, they decrease it by the amount that was in your account. And they will send you that new balance. So right now, if I have a hundred thousand in, they would send me four hundred and forty eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. I would not get five hundred, or five hundred and forty eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars because they're just basically cutting out that step of me sending them the check and then them sending me a check back.
What about anything that wasn't paid up to thirtieth, any outstanding?
I have to accrue those and show it to John and Trina Coffey. TRC fund, that's your tourism recreation convention fund. That's the money that comes in that we keep a different spreadsheet on that shows each district and the money's divided out evenly and then y'all give that money to different groups that are doing something to promote tourism, recreation, convention within your area. The coal tax that you were going to earlier is the next fund. This one, Rosby, where we saved thirteen thousand twelve dollars in the penny this year. The year before, it was almost two thousand dollars. So what I did was kind of adjust that to the best of my ability so that when that fund gets up high, possibly more than eight thousand, divide that up amongst the five districts because that's another revenue source that y'all operate off of.
Does the district not have to, I mean, doesn't have to have any gold deposits to get their fifth of it?
That's gonna be between y'all. So I'm gonna skip road construction, I'm gonna come back to that one in a second. The next one is gonna be the airport fund. I have estimated the revenues and the expenditures. It shows a loss right there. And it shows a loss for two different reasons. One, because the general fund typically transfers money to the airport to front the cost of fuel purchases. So when they go and they purchase Jet A or AgGas, they have to be able to pay the bill. But if consumers haven't come in or blown in and purchased that fuel, then there's no way of paying that bill. So the general fund has to-
Bottom the money.
Bottom the money and then they get paid and then they slot mark up on it and we'll get the money back. And it's a constant back and forth. And this right here is basically showing they didn't have a front come in, but then also we've had that, you know, at the airport with the person we had the contract with, AgAir contract went down and we're still waiting for a new contract to be finalized.
Do you know what percentage would mark up and how long we have to wait on that money being refunded? Is it a five or a ten or fifteen percent or something like that?
I think it's a five percent. Now, as far as how long do we have to wait for that money to come in, it just depends on the weather and the time of year. If it's in the winter, there's usually not a lot of people flying. If the summer's nice and dry, we have more than what we do if it's raining.
Majority of this now is credit card sales too?
Yes, and we usually have to wait anywhere from two days to a week to get the money into our account from the credit card. Also, we were looking at doing a grant through the FFA and it was a ninety five five and the county's match was five percent of thirty thousand. I couldn't budget that thirty thousand in the general fund because we don't have enough money to do that. So we will have to turn down a huge grant opportunity because we don't have funds to do it.
You want to need thirty thousand? I wonder where we can get it?
The next money has to come from the general. All right, now, solid waste. The first line against budgeted, the second line is gonna be where we're at right now. And then I've budgeted for the next year.
Third lines this year, the third lines this year?
Yes. What I did on the revenue, some of the payments that are in that nine thousand eight hundred and eighty eight are payments that were made in finance. A portion of those payments are payments that are from last year. They're considered bad debt payments. So a revenue source there, it has increased, but at the same time that it's increased, the increase on it has not been specifically just bad debt collections or new collections. So with that uncertainty there and not knowing exactly how much we need to write off for bad debt expense this year, because usually it's written off at thirty percent, I put that at nine hundred and twenty three based off of the write-up that we've done in past years. On the expenditure side of it, we've had several huge expenditures and solid waste. I'm hoping for those to decrease. But also, we had an individual that has left our county which opened up a portion of that salary and benefits within that department. So that had a little bit of savings on the expenditure side of things. I said, as well as the five-year scale. But right now, we had to dip in one hundred and sixteen thousand into previous years fund balances to be able to have a balance in that account. into previous years' fund balances to be able to have a balance in that account. And I'm gonna try to clean off. An example of what I'm talking about is right now, the revenues that came in versus the expenditures that came out. And it shows a negative one hundred and sixteen thousand. But where we have made revenues in the past, in prior years, we have a actual cash balance of one hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars in the bank. But that money is from revenues that have been generated in previous years. Now I want to go back and I want to talk to you a little bit about Triple R Secondary and Road Construction. And part of your FEMA. And that, the FEMA portion that I'm referring to is gonna be in our current year. It is not something that we are looking to have revenues or expenditures on for our 2020 year. But what we're uncertain of in this office for our current year, for me to be able to book end of the year draw entries, is the actual amount of the FEMA money that will come in versus the amount that was spent, where it was spent at off, and if it was reimbursed by a drawdown from Triple R Secondary for us to know what fund that money, when it is brought back into the county, needs to go into. Because there is a question of, was that charged against your paving? Was it not charged against the paving or patching? We won't know until everything is brought to our office. And it hasn't been brought to our office yet, where they write down that would tell us that. But that will not affect your 2020. That will just affect your current. And as long as I have that by October the fifteenth, when I plan on closing out the year, then that will be reflected when we run the financial statement in the newspaper. And we close out the end of the year, and y'all approve the end of the year closeout. The way our system works, you have two major funds. You have your secondary and you have your Triple R. Those monies that are there, you have to have certain types of expenditures. So your districts, this past year we saved a hundred thousand for patching, paving, and drawdown. And then your road construction department drills down from that to be able to have operating. Okay? So you've got six groups pulling from those two. Y'all are limited at a hundred thousand. Ah, when you look at your monies in Triple R and Secondary, in Triple R, we ate previous years. In Secondary, we did not. Okay? If you flip over to the third page on road construction, what that revenue is, is gonna be the salary reimbursement. Anything that is sold for sale of self-placed property. So if they sell a vehicle on good deals, that's what that revenue is. And then the expenditures on my account, the nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents. That money is the money that pays for the actual office, that pays for the salaries of the people who work in the office, and also from the individuals who do the work of which those monies can be drawn down to reimburse their salaries and benefits. Then from there, that amount goes to pay for the road building materials that they use. It goes to pay for telephone, electrical, fuel in their pickups, and if they buy new equipment. So, and our contract, based off of what they spent this year, they spent nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents. So, this one was hard because, for like I said, with the FEMA money, and not knowing exactly what fund that was going to be reimbursed to, it would be to road construction, Triple R, Secondary, or the districts, that will be cleaned up before we close out the year. But their expenditures should never be more than their revenues because it's a drawdown process. And hopefully with the new process that y'all are planning on implementing of how often the drawdowns are done, then that number should be more up to date than what it has been in the past. But if you flip back to your Triple R and your secondary, and you look at the revenues that have come in, and you see what my budgeted amounts are, what I have done is based off road construction's expenditures, I have put in expenditures to match their revenues to come back to Triple R and Secondary to be able to leave enough money for there to be a drawdown for the five districts for the summer. To be able to handle the other portion of individual salary benefits that left the county and to lower the amount of expenditures in that department to be able to withstand the revenues that come in with a zero fund balance, that would only leave y'all seventy-five thousand dollars each for patching and paving. Assuming you have a zero fund balance. And if you did have a fund balance, it should be around the five hundred thousand dollar mark to where y'all would be able to have another catastrophic accident or if you need to make match money, because that's the amount that they try not to get below. So right now, to do more than seventy-five thousand dollars of patching and paving with the revenues that have actually come in budgeted for next year and to be able to support the road construction department as it stands, then you would all be able to have seventy-five.
Will we currently get eighty?
No, a hundred.
So we cut back seventy-five?
If you don't dip into previous year's reserves, yes. And right now, a big part of our problem that I see for the county is we've had to, due to weather and other incidences, dip into reserves. Those reserves will only last for so long, and we can hope not to have another accident. But we used to not have as many FEMA incidences as we've had in the past decade. So it doesn't look like it's gonna lighten up anytime soon with having a disaster.
Most of our actions, you call them, come from extreme, uh, weather conditions, which seem to be more and more as time goes on.
And we need to be able to be the ant instead of the chicken, and we need to prepare for the future. Because if you don't start preparing for the future, and then the remains of the revenues that we expect to come in, we will not be able to function in any of our departments.
Well, once again, I know everybody's taking a hit on this, but we're, our, our districts are taking as big a hit or more any, only as anybody on this, on this budget. So it's not likely we're Robin Peters PayPal over here, it's John Everett.
Well, it's currently been, what, ninety, and they were, they were proposing to do a hundred. And if you go back to seventy-five, that, you're taking a hit each district for that, I tell you.
Oh, yeah, seventy-five thousand dollars for patching and paving.
Right, just in, just in that for each district.
I want to bring my calculator out. I'll make sure. After the next drawdown that's being planned, because we have a negative cash balance in road construction right now, your Triple R and secondary will have a combined balance of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So let's make a formal deal with Advocate. If a disaster came through right this second, an untended disaster, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, to be able to pay all the employees that work over there and to maintain or fix the roads, like what y'all did when you had floods, you had floods in December, and we had the tornadoes, there would not be enough money there to cover it. And you've got to keep in mind, with the new gas tax that's supposed to be coming in, you have to make a match of that out of your Triple R and your secondary for employees. So when you start thinking six seventy-one, if that match came in today of thirty thousand, which is an estimate, and it's not a hard number, it could be more, it could be less, you won't have your reserve. So what I've done is when I have budgeted, I have budgeted assuming a zero fund balance. I have been conservative because we cannot be very radical in this budget because there's not enough revenues to come in to have a lot of the budget. When you cut back in all departments, I wonder how to look from the revenue streams to be able to survive on any show I have issues. What I would like to do that I don't have on budget in front of you is go back to the capital improvement fund and budget twenty-five thousand for phase one for the air conditioning at the courthouse, and to also include that money for wiring at the courthouse. I call it wire, cable running. They said we would need cat five throughout the courthouse. And I think Mr. Tucker was gonna walk through and measure so that we would know exactly how much cat five we would need.
How much is in this cap, capital improvement fund then?
Eight hundred thousand.
You're gonna take thirty of that?
But that's not reflected on this paperwork.
That money can't be spent for anything else. It can't be taken, put in general fund to help soften other things. It must be spent for capital improvement for that.
How often money come in, how often does money come to it?
It comes in once a year. That might, you'll see it usually around April. You'll see it when I'm giving your monthly financial statements, because y'all get a portion of the money in your districts. Half of the money goes to capital improvement, and the other half goes to each one of y'all.
Is this offshore drilling money?
So that money comes to y'all at the same time it comes into the capital improvement fund. Because it's for the capital, and y'all only use fifty percent of it for the capital improvement of the infrastructure. So the fifty percent of that gets divided into y'all to improve your roads.
I think it's. Seventy-five thousand goes into it?
Usually there's about thirty or forty thousand that goes into each one of your districts.
And you said half of this, other half goes to capital improvement?
Does you gasoline tax, like, how, where will this affect? Effect or affect our budget as far as, will this bring more revenues to work?
What I'll do, you'll have two checking accounts. You'll have a gasoline and a district that have to be kept separate from everything else. When a project comes into play, that money will be drawn to pay for that project. And then you'll have to have a match out of secondary road and Triple R money to meet the project. And then all salaries that go for people who are working on a project that might be county employees from your districts or from the two-way office can only be drawn down out of secondary road and Triple R. Because the money that was passed for the gasoline tax for Alabama rebuild can only be used to rebuild. It cannot be used for.
No salaries.
No salaries whatsoever. Y'all will have to turn in a report to the state and to the.
Limonary and what to do with, and what he did with it.
And copies of invoices showing who was paid. But we need to have money in reserves to pay that match because right now, they're estimating thirty on fourteen. I'm not sure what the projects are in upcoming years for the other four districts. But you don't know, and I don't know, and no one knows if that match will constantly be thirty, if it will drop to ten thousand, or if it will be eighty thousand, and you need to be able to have that money to take care of that match.
So we gotta have a match on a new tax. Makes a lot of sense. It's not like five percent though, is it? Something like that. Any questions, Dave?
Well, what, in other words, so we, we reflect in what we're saying. All said and done, we're, we're gonna have a flat budget with an increase in insurance.
Um, it's not level because we slid and made adjustments on each line item for a five-year average. But all of the changes that were on that one spreadsheet, from health care to family to per deal, all of those changes. All of the changes with the resolutions that were attached to your agenda that your county attorney topped up last night and will have to read this morning. But I would like to change the expenditure amount on the capital improvement because I neglected to do that before I gave that to y'all. At that point, the resolutions are ready. I just need permission.
So when will we go over on this budget?
You can vote on it today. You have each of the resolutions and the budget. I would like to fix that twenty-five thousand before y'all make that motion. the budget? I would like to fix that twenty-five thousand before y'all make that motion. So you'll take a five-minute break and go do that.
Okay, capital improvement.
Do y'all feel comfortable with twenty-five thousand?
We've got estimates yet?
Yeah, I think they've adjusted something forward.
I was trying to remember. We, we've, on what Keith or Kenneth said that, Chris said that they will roll by just a rough estimate, you know, off the top of his head on the air conditioning, but I don't remember.
His portion was under, I think, ten thousand. But I'm, I'm not sure about running cat five through the courthouse.
But on his, 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 there was also a question about some hole being drilled too on what that was going to cost, wasn't it? I don't remember if I don't want
That was for the jail.
If you, if you over and when you estimate the actual cost, you don't have to spend it.
Right. This is just a preliminary budget. We just need to make sure that I don't under budget.
Does that need to be a separate motion?
Yeah, I can, if y'all feel comfortable with twenty-five, I can go put twenty-five in and reprint, bring it back to y'all and y'all can make a motion.
So I'm not ready to vote on any of this right now.
I would, I would say do thirty. But I mean, that way
Be safe, be a little safe.
Safe side.
Change that to thirty and we can, uh
What did, what did we decide on the on the offices of putting their wish, on their wish list for the thirty and forty and ten thousand for appliances and stuff? Are we going, are we going to go away with that and just have it come before us on that? Or we're going to set that in the budget like we've been doing that we discussed the other day?
One second, let me pull up the wish list. What I did on the wish list? On the engineering department. I went through and I took one, two, there were three individuals that had been discussed. And as far as the amount of the change, it should not be made in full. And then some block I put those in. I wasn't able to do the asphalt zipper. I did the county fourteen, thirty thousand match. Um, solid waste, the individual that was listed there, I put that in. Um, I was able to put the garbage truck in. Um, the general fund request, I was not able to put any of that in because I didn't have the money to find it.
Garbage truck request for what, twenty-five thousand?
On the revenue commission request, I wasn't able to include any of it. On the EMA request, I wasn't able to include any of it. On the private judges request, I didn't have any of it. On the sheriff's request, there wasn't any of it. On the appropriation, it was to hold the same. So the only department that was receiving any kind of benefit would be that of the engineer's office, the solid waste department. And I tried to stay within the means of the eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine of the engineers department and the eighty-three-one-sixty-two within the solid waste department because of the money that was spent this year and how that was done. And I wanted to make sure that when y'all had the drawdowns, that y'all were able to live within the means to be able to do so.
We should first take two, come back at about seven, look at an hour, two, or whatever you want to do.
Doc, can you take a little space if that would be better? So y'all kind of clear your minds, think about it.
I need, I need to look over some myself. I don't know about the rest of them.
We can, we can come back at two o'clock and vote on it, or we can come back Monday. I mean, it's got to be done by Monday.
Whatever y'all can do.
You want to go work for me? Bob, you've been at this a long time. What would you suggest to us?
This is not something that's come over us this year. If you look back in the years, last ten years, how much money has been taken out of our general fund and not replaced with anything? That, that we have no control over. I imagine we, we took a half million dollars or more of, we've, funds that we no longer get than we used to get for different reasons and things. It could be, uh, broke told some of them the other day, four or five of them the other day. They can be listed as, you know, we've given, uh, well, one night we, we thought we'd reimburse, we gave, uh, Russus, uh, ran with two hundred thousand dollars like there to rebuild. We thought we was going to get refunded, we never did. And just things like this has come out of our, our general fund. It's, uh, and we've had no new revenues coming in.
It's hard to give white blood if you're getting nothing back in return. Break it.
You know, it's, 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 you know, it goes outside. We'd all like, you know, our employees do such a good job, we'd always like to, uh, reward them and give them uh, raises. It's not every year, certainly. Often, which, you know, this won't be the case this situation.
I'm good with the senior in order, my dear. Don't matter if it's, I'll leave that to y'all.
You what?
I said, talking about Tim, said come back at two, the senior and vote on it to kind of clear her heads and look it over. Or come back Monday and do it. Long as we get it Monday, be, either one's fine with me, I think. I'll leave that up to y'all.
What's yours, Lieutenant?
Doug.
Don't matter to me.
I'll have to do it Monday. Monday's fine with me. We have a motion to have a special call meeting Monday at nine AM to September thirtieth.
And you made the motion, I'll say.
All in favor? We have a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.